All right. Good evening, everyone calling together the meeting for the planning board February first. Twenty twenty-two. First, I have an opening statement I need to read. This meeting is being recorded in accordance with a government order suspending certain provisions of the open reading law, general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty. Real-time public participation and comment can be addressed to the planning board utilizing the Zoom virtual meeting software for remote access. This application will allow users to view the meeting and send a comment or question to the chair via the question and answer function. Submitted text comments will be read into the record. For those of you joining by phone, press star nine. If you want to ask a question, please raise your hand. A copy of this recording will be on the city's webpages. All votes will be done via roll call to ensure account accuracy. So we have Larry Hassan.
Here.
Karina Das.
Isn't.
Samantha Boyce.
Here.
And James Sweeney.
Here.
And Tony Gonzalez present. We have Chief Williams with us. Rob May, Director, and Pamela Gury. Okay. Start with the review and acceptance of the minutes from the previous meeting.
So we will need a motion from a board member to approve the one-four and one-five meeting minutes.
Motion to approve review and acceptance of the minutes of the meeting from January fourth, twenty-two, and January fifth, twenty-two.
Second.
A roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Karina Das.
Yes.
Samantha Boyce.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. All right, before we continue, just wanted to make note that there's a few continuances. So we have sixty-eight, seventy, Field Street continued to March first as returned to ZBA. We have fifteen Rutland Square. Site plan approval continued to March first. And one-seventy-two Route five-five-eight-eighteen Belgravia Ave. This definitive subdivision request for continuance till April fifth. Is that all the continuance, Pam?
It is.
Okay. And now the A and Rs.
There are two. The first one is a parcel off of Pleasant Street. It's a vacant parcel, so there's no address to it. And it's on the corner of Prospect Field and Pleasant. And they're looking to divide off the property into two parcels, one which will face on Field Street and one that'll remain off of Pleasant Street. They are, it's commercially zoned, so they're allowed to divide it down however they see fit, but they will if they want to use it for anything but commercial, it'll require a zoning variance.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve A and R Plan Map forty-three Plot two-thirty-one Pleasant Street Lots A and B.
Okay, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Karina Das.
Yes.
Samantha Boyce.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes.
Okay, the second one is the property is in Abington except for actually the two slivers of property that you see there that are in Brockton. And they are tiny little slivers. And what he's done is he's divided the sliver into two halves. One which will be on one property in Abington and one which will connect to the other property in Abington. There's nothing you can do with them in Brockton, but again.
So we're charged with the sliver in Brockton.
Correct.
Worry about Abington.
No, there'll be houses in Abington. But that sliver in Brockton's going to be combined with Abington.
Okay. Well, different one. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve A and R application Map one-seventy-eight Plot three-eight-one North Quincy Lots B and C.
Second.
Hey, Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Karina Das.
Yes.
Samantha Boyce.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you. There are no lot releases, no street acceptances.
No, I will need you guys to come in and sign these.
Okay.
Sure, Pam.
And when's a good time, Pam? Are they ready to be signed?
Um, yes, they'd be ready to be signed tomorrow.
Okay. I can be needed tomorrow or Thursday at the latest.
Okay, thank you.
Swing in tomorrow. Thanks, Pam.
Awesome, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. So next, we need a vote on the adoption of Levitt Brook Master Plan. This is the presentation we heard, I think, was it January sixth?
Fifth.
Fifth.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Levitt Brook Plan.
Second.
Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Karina Das.
Yes.
Samantha Boyce.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes.
Thank you, all board.
You're welcome. Moving right along, the first applicant on the agenda is for a site plan approval. Twelve zero eight Montello Street, twenty-four unit residential building.
Is it just Scott or who else is joining us?
I believe I will met the owner is, here he is, he's here. I believe he's on the phone, I think.
Could he raise? No.
H, oh, H, there he is. Okay. Let me promote you to panelists. And there you are in the group. Congratulations. The floor is yours, Scott.
Thank you, Mr. May. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Scott Farrier from Home Green Engineering, representing Build Our Group, who is proposing a three-story building, a three-story residential building at twelve oh eight Montello Street, right at the corner of Montello and Riverside Ave. It's the site in previous years of a multifamily home that was burned down. It's been vacant now for two or three years. The previous owner went through the Board of Appeals process a few years back, looking for thirty-two residential units. That was denied by the Board of Appeals. We then switched the plan, basically the same footprint, but down to twenty-four residential units with twenty-four parking spaces. We came to the planning board back about two years ago for permission to return to the ZBA. Then shortly thereafter, we received ZBA approval for the plan. That's before you. So again, it's a three-story building, eight units per floor, parking essentially underneath the building. So twenty-four spaces underneath in the garage and then eight units per floor. It's an even break in the building, twelve two-bedroom units and twelve one-bedroom units. So that's the breakdown. The two-bedroom units are about twelve hundred square feet apiece. A little bit plus or minus on some of the units and the one-bedroom units are about seven hundred and fifty square feet apiece. As you folks know, it's right down the street, a couple hundred feet for the Campello T Station. So that's obviously a good thing we feel like for the community and certainly for the developer at this point to have people that are that are close to the T and that'll be using the public transportation in and out of Boston. As you can see on the plan, it's about a fifteen thousand square foot lot with our design. It's just about all taken up by the proposed building, a little bit of green space to the side of the building, closest to our Montello Street property, Montello Street of Butter. There is a separate parking space for delivery vehicles off of Montello as the planning board and the ZBA have both been looking for on these type of projects. So we do have that separate delivery space. We have an onsite drainage system that'll handle any increased runoff from the roof. That'll be basically under the garage, a leaching system that'll take care of all of the increased runoff from our project. All other utilities are available in Riverside Ave, Madam Chair. As part of the construction, we are rebuilding the sidewalk in front of our building on Riverside Ave. The handicap ramp at the corner of Montello and Riverside, I believe, is fairly new. So we're basically picking up from the handicap ramp going down Riverside to our frontage. So that'll be an entirely new sidewalk. I think that's really it, Madam Chair. That's a quick breakdown of what we're looking for.
What, I'm gonna open it up with a question. You said the sidewalk down Riverside. What about the sidewalk down on the other side of the street? That one's in really bad shape. Would that be, Rob, would that be part of this applicant's responsibility or the city's?
When you say on the other side of the street, you mean the other side of Riverside?
Well, no, um, on twenty-eight.
On Montello.
Montello, right.
Yeah. I don't think you'd want to leave that looking that way, Scott, right? Do you want to pull up your plan?
That'd be helpful.
It's always a loaded question, Madam Chair. I'll try. If Rob gives me permission, he can just do it for me.
You should have permission, but I will do it.
Give me of the embarrassment.
Exactly, exactly.
Love an honest man.
Yes. So I think sheet C four A probably shows it a little bit better, Rob, just to get rid of the plantings that. So we do have just that small section, Madam Chair, right in front of our building. That's existing, yeah, right there, that existing Bitcoin sidewalk that we're planning on keeping. As I said, the handicap ramp right around the corner, that's fairly new and is concrete and is in good shape. The Bitcoin sidewalk right there that we're keeping, it's in, it's actually in pretty good shape as well. That's why we're keeping it. The one on Riverside is a little bit broken up. That's why we were hoping to replace that, but that's certainly, we'll take any input that you folks have on that issue, Madam Chair.
So what I'm looking at, it's in bad, bad shape. The one along Montello.
On that side.
And I don't see the, okay.
You know, Madam Chair, it would make sense to just completely wrap the corner.
Okay, thank you. Any other?
It's probably seventy-five feet or so, Madam Chair. So, you know, once we put our driveway into that for that loading space, yeah, it's seventy or seventy-five feet. So you're probably right. It's probably worth just redoing it at this point.
All right, thank you. Questions from the planning board members?
Madam Chair, if I may, we have been working very closely with Scott and the design team and the ownership of this new project. This is exactly the kind of thing that we would like to see happen in the Campello neighborhood and especially within walking distance of the Campello train station. It kind of is the first, maybe the first project out of the ground on our Campello vision. You know, across the street, across Riverside, we're working with Neighbor Works on a ninety-unit residential development. This is really going to connect the community with the train station and knit that back into the neighborhood. So I'm hoping you'll adopt this.
Very good. Thank you for that.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
Is there any way, in addition to the plan, we could see the rendering to this? If there is one, Scott?
Don't get seasick.
There is, Mr. Sweeney. I've got it behind me. You probably can't see it, but there we go. I think it was, the renderings are, yeah, sheet six and seven, I believe, Rob, of that set.
Yeah.
Those are the floor plans. There we go.
Okay.
I didn't want to move too fast.
Well, that, yeah, if you can just scroll up a little bit from there, Rob, that's looking at it from Riverside. The little blocked out section way over to the left would be the entrance to the garage. So as you can see, there's a little bit of a slope change from Montello heading down Riverside to the train station, which actually works in our favor. So we have an at-grade entrance right at the corner of Montello and Riverside for pedestrians enter the building in the lobby. And then as it slopes down, it works perfectly for our, essentially a garage under if it was a raised ranch type of a house. So it works perfectly for that and then the three stories of residential up above it.
Scott, is that considered the podium parking there?
It's a partial podium.
Yeah.
Simply because it's, it's, and it's partial underground.
Right.
So it would be considered a podium if it was all above ground.
Okay.
So it's like seventy-five, seventy-five percent above ground, so it's called partial.
Thank you.
Other questions from the planning board?
Yes, Madam Chair, I actually have a question. Hi, Scott, really quickly. I know that you were working with the city engineer on this. I know that the city engineer had some recommendations. Can you sort of talk a little bit about those recommendations and what you did to sort of fulfill those recommendations?
Sure. You know, most of the changes, you know, that we come up with with the city engineer through this process are a kind of technical in nature and really, you know, don't show up all that well on the plans. But if we, actually if we flip back to sheet number C four, one of the, one of the questions that the city engineer had and one of the suggestions he had, we have sewer lines and drain lines that cross over each other. So the city engineer wanted us to propose where the pipes cross each other to be ducted lion as opposed to a PVC pipe that we would typically have. So we made that, yeah, that's perfect right there, Rob. So right inside the building where we have our underground infiltration system, you can see the drainage in the sewer cross each other as you continue down towards the, towards the exit of the garage, Rob. Yep, right there. You can see the sewer and the drain are kind of right on top of each other. So in that location, they're crossing each other. The city engineer wanted us to go with ducted lion, which is labeled six-inch DI for the pipe. So we made that change. A couple of other items that the city engineer had were just some clarifications on the grading for the sidewalk at the rear of the building. Just to make sure that the cross slopes and the downslopes on the ramps were within ADA requirement, which is a two percent cross slope and a five percent downslope. So he just wanted to make sure that we had enough spot grades on the plan so the contractor would be able to handle that. The other thing that we've been working a lot with the city engineer on are the driveways into these properties. Where before, a lot of places in the city, you would see a sidewalk that went down. A handicap would go down from the sidewalk. You would cross the driveway then go back up a ramp to get back to the sidewalk. Now, as you drive around not only Brockton, but a lot of the biggest cities around, around the area, the sidewalk itself goes straight across the driveway level. There is no ramp down or ramp up. And it's the actual driveway itself that ramps up off of the edge of pavement. So that area that Rob is highlighting right there where the sidewalk is will be leveled straight across. There is no ramp for the, for the wheelchairs to have to navigate. So it's, it's a little bit more of a, I think, a modern design in what most of the planners are going with in urban areas. So we've made that change on this plan and we're trying to incorporate it into all of our plans as he suggested. So those are really the two major items that were requested that we've been working with the engineering department to rectify.
Thank you, Scott. And is there anything that's outstanding that we should know about?
Um, no, we're just waiting for his, for his final blessing. I met with him last week. We went over those couple of items that, again, those sloping issues on the sidewalk. Really, that was, that was it, just that piping issue and in the sloping situation. So I think that's it.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Sure.
One of my favorite questions, exterior lighting, I just, if you, is that building gonna have any on that at night?
Yep, we do have, I believe, the architectural plans called for downward lighting. You can see them on the plans. And in addition to that, we've proposed
There's uplighting here.
Yep, uplighting there for the sign. One of the plans that you had up, Rob, I think the other one we were looking at with the garage showed the lights. Yeah, right there on the side of the garage entrance. In addition to that, we're proposing two of the city of Brockton lanterns that you've been putting around the downtown area. One of them on Riverside, one at the intersection of Riverside and Montello, and then further down our frontage on Montello Street as pedestrian lighting and a little bit of lighting for the building. It's right on top of the sidewalk. So we've added those that you folks have been seeing pop up all over the city.
Scott, so what you're saying is just gonna continue with the downtown themed lighting, city lighting for that area? Okay.
Yes.
Okay, other questions before we open up for public comment?
So I have a question. So on the Riverside Road, you have a CME wall, you know, and I don't see any light there. I don't know, is that enough what you described right now? Like, I just.
Yeah, we've got those two lanterns right there that Rob is pointing to, the downward facing light. So that'll give you light as you enter into the garage.
Yeah, from that, from the garage entrance to the main entrance, I don't see any light there in that whole wall.
You mean the entire, sorry, you mean the entire building, right?
Yep, yep. You know, we felt like there is gonna be some lighting at the corner of the building there, that upward lighting that Rob spoke about originally. But in addition to that, we've got those two lamp posts that we have right on the sidewalk. So the feeling was that, especially the one right in front of the door, that would give plenty of light into that entrance.
And I believe, Scott, there's a street light here.
Right.
And here.
Right, exactly.
Seems like it's such a beautiful building, you'd want to see it at night. It's, and how many stories are we? Four or five?
Stories plus the garage.
Okay.
So.
So I agree with James, additional lighting, as long as we don't make it look like Las Vegas.
Certainly.
Just shut us. I guess that comes into the wattage.
Yep.
So just, you know, it's beautiful. We want to see it. I think it would attract other investment to do the same when you see, when you drive by in Brockton downtown at night.
We'll, we'll make sure the architect adds those for the, on the final set.
Thank you.
So would we want to specify downward lighting from either the middle of the building or the top of, top of the building corners?
I would think in the center.
Up and down from the center?
Yeah.
Right on the second floor, basically.
Yeah, up and down. I do want to remind, this section is open. And so the light from the garage will also shine through this opening onto the sidewalk.
Yep.
I do agree, the middle of the building would be good. Is that a good question, Karina?
Yeah, I have one more question about the main entrance. I see that it's kind of in the corner. So so I was wondering, do you have any kind of signage for the wayfinding whoever is coming from Montello side? Because it's kind of hidden, right? So.
It will, there will be a building sign typically, and I don't know if they show up on these plans. But typically, that the yellow architectural feature on the, on the building going all the way up, that kind of looks like an elevator shaft right there in the front. Typically, that's where they would, we would have a building sign. So I'm sure there will be one there just to.
You might want a smaller sign here.
Right.
Because the building name will sit on this panel.
Yep.
As a larger.
Oh.
Larger feature.
This, this may.
I did not see that in the elevations.
Yep.
Got it. And where is the transformer? I did not see the.
In the back of the building towards sheet four or five would show that, Rob. There we go. Yep. Either one of those. Yeah, so right there, the back of the building, closest to our neighbor. Yep, exactly, right there, the square area with the, we've got Abavaide in front of it, but that's, that would be the transformer, right in that green area.
Okay.
From the electrical room back here.
Right. We don't have, obviously, a lot of room for a transformer, so that's the best place we could put it.
Okay, other questions?
I've got one last one. What's on the, from the street, what's on the right side there? In that, I mean, it almost, the footprint looks like, almost like a handgun.
Yeah, it's a, it's a sidewalk around the, oh, you mean right there, that's an existing house.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
All right, if there are no other questions, Rob, you want to open it up to the public?
Um, yes, I need to stop sharing to do that. So if there's anybody from the public who would like to comment on this plan, please use the raise your button icon at, or raise your hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you hover over the bottom of your screen, you should have a menu bar that opens up. You just simply click on that raised hand and will allow you to speak. And I do not see anyone with their hand raised at the moment.
Okay.
So we shall continue.
All right, just to recap a few things, if this was to be a motion, prepare the sidewalks on the Montello Street side, additional lighting downward, the middle of the building. And we'd also need to make sure that the city engineer signs off on, on all that he needs to. Did I miss anything, Pam?
The exterior lighting.
Yeah, the downward lighting in the middle of the building?
It's more like a sconce lighting, but however you want.
Up and down.
Okay, up and down. All right. Nothing else, Pam, from the engineer we have to clear for conditions?
Um, like I said, the plan was dropped off yesterday. So I'm sure he hasn't had a chance to review it, so as long as you include that condition in there, that
Okay.
Nothing gets signed and no building permit issues.
All right, is there a motion?
Motion to approve with the said conditions.
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call Larry Hassan.
Yes.
Samantha Boyce.
Yes.
James Sweeney.
Yes.
Karina Das.
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, Rob, for the help. Have a good evening, guys. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is four thirty-two Crescent Street, a preliminary subdivision representative J K Hongren.
Did he?
Scott again.
Yeah, but I think he signed off.
Oh.
He did.
Well, then, will someone want to message him while we move on to preliminary subdivision? Amelia Estates. W Engineering. Are they here?
I think Scott just come back in?
No, it's, um, Charlie on Evan, it's.
Okay. Move them over and, um.
Well, I'm trying to email Scott.
I'll move them over then. And they have moved in?
Yeah, can you just? Oh, you know. Hang on just one sec.
Evan's got a fancy microphone.
Like a podcast.
Kinda look professional here, you know?
Dang.
I'm gonna have to get the, uh, gas fireplace behind me, though. That's, I like that.
It's electric.
It's cool.
Okay.
Can you ready?
Um, yeah. Yep.
All right.
It's Jim.
Evan? Oh, you want Jim? I'll promote him to panelist also. And who is presenting?
Jim was gonna start off just to introduce what we're doing.
Yeah, uh, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman, uh, and members of the planning board, thank you very much, Attorney Jim Burke. I represent, please, I represent Charlie Macy. And he is the developer of Amelia Estates, a project that you are extremely familiar with. Uh, Charlie has met, uh, a number of times with the members of the planning department. Uh, and he has modified his plan based on suggestions, uh, that were mutually reached, and he thinks he's got a, uh. Uh, a more beneficial plan for development of Amelia Estates. And I'd like Evan to please identify the changes for you, uh, in this request to, uh, be allowed to return to the zoning board.
Very good. I'm going to share my screen. Um, again, Evan Watson here with W Engineering, also representing, uh, the applicant. Is my screen being shared? Just to check that, we have the, the plan?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Okay, so, um, here we have Amelia Estates, uh, this time shown with eighteen lots with, uh, the reduced frontage. Um, should be noted that. We do have, uh, quite a few lots here that actually do comply, uh, with a hundred seventy-five feet of frontage. We have one, two, three, four, leave this five in here, five. Um, and so what we've also done is, um. We have a couple things to, to address the design of the road. We don't need to change at all, none of the drainage, none of the grading, none of. The profiles, everything stays the same. Uh, the access road here, uh, and the. Cross-project water easement, that stays in exactly the same spot. Uh, the only difference we would have to do is change this drainage pipe. Um, you can see here, we had it over, whoops, excuse me, we had it over to the right a little bit along this property line. And now when the property line comes in, we can just move the pipe. Um, and that's it. Um, the great thing about this new alignment here, as, uh, Attorney Burke was saying, is some of these lots, they actually get a little bit better. Uh, you can see in the original plan, we have some lots that tail off behind one another. Um, and the geometry of, of the lots, especially in, in this zone. Aren't that great, uh, because we're, we're chasing some of that area. So when we look at the new revised plan, the, the lots are much more uniform. The lines actually come straight back. Um, so this plan fits, um, you know, we had the same style house that we were showing before. Um, it fits with the other, uh, projects in the area. And we think this is a, a good project and be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Open it up to the planning board?
Adam Chair, if I could. Um, so this, by downgrading the number of lots, are we providing better alleviation for the drainage?
So, yeah, the, the drainage system was, uh, designed with this number of lots, uh, in mind. Actually, I had twenty lots in mind, so. Um, having the eighteen, the drainage that's provided will be able to handle that, no problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Madam Chair, if I may, give some history on this. Um, site.
Of course you be.
That we are seeing again, um. The property owner. Uh, and the development team came to the city with a proposal to build eighteen lots. Um, and it's pretty much the plan that you're looking at now. We had been, uh, told by our, uh, city solicitor that. Interpreting subdivision law, that if we were to, we, the board, were to waive the lot frontage requirement. Uh, that would be the same as, you know, granting it a, a variance. And so they didn't need to go to. The zoning board if they wanted a smaller lot that was not a hundred seventy-five feet in, in width. There was some, uh, discussion with a neighbor and the neighbor's attorney with our law department. And, um, the information or the, uh, uh, approval to do that, that we thought we had was, um. Reverseed, and quite frankly, we still don't know what the right answer is, but the applicant chose to. Drop the number of, uh, lots from eighteen to fifteen. Um, and they were all conforming lots. Um, you may remember that after, you know, a couple of weeks, the planning board eventually approved these. Um, including a waiver on the length of the road. Which, um, our subdivision regulations say that the ro- road can't be more than, uh, six hundred feet. Uh, dead end can't be more than six hundred feet. This is now twenty-two hundred feet. Um, but, um, in, in. The rigmarole of going back and forth between, um, the eighteen. Uh, and fifteen, the developer obviously has lost some ability, uh, to recoup. Their expenses in putting in the road, the, um, gravity, or not gravity, but the, uh. Uh, ejector pumps for the, um, sanitary sewer, all of that has to be pumped uphill. To connect with the gravity sewer system. So, um, obviously, the planning board did not think that. Twenty units was appropriate, but the owner is back, um, with his original plan. And hopes that, uh, you will consider an eighteen-unit, uh, subdivision. And I'll end there.
So, we're still faced with the same, um, issue. Not enough frontage. No hardship. We approved fifteen and now we're back for eighteen and we, we. There's not enough change.
If I may, uh, Madam Chairwoman, the standard here is not, uh, to be allowed to return to the zoning board. Uh, with a substantial change, uh, but rather a preliminary subdivision before you. With the request that you render an opinion, uh, to, uh, allow us to proceed to the, uh, zoning board of appeals. So. There is no need to discuss, and I think Mr. May can agree with this, a hardship. Uh, at this stage of the proceeding, that, that solely falls under chapter forty-eight, the zoning enforcement, uh, act. So, uh, I, I think the standard is, if you think it's a good plan, uh, then you allow the zoning board to make its decision. And I, I think that's just as simple.
And that's why I brought up, there's, we're faced with the same issue with not enough frontage, so. The issue is still before us. Um, other planning board members?
Yeah, Ma- Madam Chair, if I could, um, so from the twenty to the eighteen, um, just so I can get this clear. There was, there's no change in the frontage of the lots, it's kind of the configuration of the, the body of the lots, is that? Is that wh- what I'm hearing or what I'm, what we're seeing here?
Uh, twenty to the eighteen, uh, we have more lots that actually conform, so.
Okay.
Uh, the difference before is that we were, uh, the twenty lot plan showed three lots on this cul-de-sac. And divided, uh, these lots also. And then it also had the, in order to accomplish that, we had the misshapen lots that had the. Skinny, uh, rat tails, the, if you will, the, the long geometry. So it was essentially this same plan. In, in this zone, and we were able to push everything around to get the twenty. Uh, so this plan from the twenty is we have less lots around the cul-de-sac. And then we don't have to chase that extra area, so we're able to, to shape out the lots, uh, nice and uniform.
Okay. And the bene- and the benefit of the, the drainage here is that, in addition to that, how you reconfigure it, so it al- also benefits the drainage?
Yeah, so that, we just have to realign this one drainage pipe so that it goes on, uh, this property line. And the general benefit of doing this is, you know, if you look at. The geometry of these lots, you have a thirty thousand square foot requirement with a hundred seventy-five foot of frontage. So. When you take a hundred seventy-five foot of frontage, these, all these lots end up being oversized and underutilized. So it's not uncommon in the city of Brockton to have a frontage that's commensurate with the width requirement, which is a hundred and twenty-five. So all along, this was our ultimate goal, um, but as Rob said earlier, we, we kind of ended up on a circuitous path to get here, so. Um, this me- matches what's typically done in the city. Where we have a width requirement of a hundred and twenty-five feet and a thirty thousand square foot lot requirement. So when you come in and zoom in here, um, for a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. This depth gets us right around thirty thousand square feet, right where we wanna be. Um, so it utilizes the land better, and it. Makes sense having the thirty thousand square feet and a hundred twenty-five foot width, that the frontage should be a hundred twenty-five. When we stretch out to a hundred seventy-five, that's where you start seeing, um, you know, the oversized lots that were forty thousand square feet, et cetera, so. That this utilizes the land better and is, it matches the width.
Okay, and what would you say would be the average, uh, square footage of the, the homes being, uh, produced there?
Uh, these I show, I show a width here of seventy-five, I think, by twenty-eight. Um, and Charlie could speak up to this actual size, but I expect these to be a four-bedroom home. Um, these are shown as generic, um, and they're either a little bit. They're a little bit bigger, a little bit smaller than what's already built here on Kelly. About the same size.
Okay, so give or take, I would assume when you, towards the end of the cul-de-sac, you might build them a little bigger, but. I mean, what's, I mean, are we over two thousand square foot, four-bedroom? Uh, I'm thinking over maybe twenty-five hundred square feet at least?
Charlie, yeah, it's, we've maybe about twenty-five to twenty-eight hundred?
Uh, good evening. Uh, it should be pretty much uniform, uh, with the existing neighborhoods. Trying to build a nice upscale four-bedroom home, two and a half bath. Um, anywhere from twenty-two to twenty-six hundred square foot. Um, I also wanted to elaborate on a couple of different things. There's actually six lots out of the eighteen proposed here. Uh, which is a third that actually do have the hundred and seventy-five feet, um, frontage. And again, I, I know that, uh, Mr. May and everyone has elaborated of this plan from. Day one, which we, we thought this plan was what we were gonna pro- propose at a hundred and twenty-five feet from day one, that we thought that was. Uh, within the rules and regulations of the planning board to actually endorse. So. And obviously somehow that was a misconnect and, uh, and I've diligently worked with the input with the planning board and the planners. To try to make the best thing we can to conform with, uh, all the budding properties that have been approved. Uh, keep everything in the neighborhood and, and give the lots the most usable area and still a third of them have the hundred and seventy-five foot. So this plan is significantly different than the last plan that you've seen, the twenty, all with, uh, better area, better usage in, in more conformant, so I hope. Hope that's all considerable to the board.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I could, I have, I have been on record and still am on the record as saying that the thirty thousand square foot, hundred and seventy-five foot. Width. Um, is, is a bit ridiculous for Brockton. It's more of an eastern. Um, zoning standard, and, and it was changed for a variety of reasons, but it, it really is, um. Um, not a, a, a good fit for Brockton. There's very few homes that are built on that standard, yet that is what the law is. Um, so. Um, until we change it, um, developers like Mr. Macy are going to have to go into the zoning board of appeals and see if they can find a, a hardship. Uh, for making a, um. Uh, an appeal for, uh, a, a smaller lot or a smaller lot frontage. And as we had been saying earlier, in the fifteen lot subdivision, we had fifteen. Lots and fifteen of those lots were conforming. In this eighteen lot subdivision. Um, we have six that are fully conforming. And all of them conform to the thirty thousand square foot requirement. In the eight, in the twenty lot subdivision, I don't remember. How many were conforming, but none of them were conforming for a lot frontage. I think a few of them were conforming for a lot area. So it, it's really gets down to, is the board. Comfortable with a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage versus the. Required hundred and seventy-five feet.
Madam Chair, if I could. Um, just seeing the size of the structures, I don't think that, you know, I'm, I'm not foreseeing an issue, but, uh, Chief Williams is on with us. Does he foresee any? Public safety issues with this? As far as frontage and how close the structures will be?
No, I don't see a problem with the, are you hearing me?
Yep, I got you.
Okay, um. I don't see any problem with the frontage sizes. Uh, the one thing I'd like to see on the drawing is the representation that all these buildings will be sprinkled, as we agreed in the past. Um, but the frontages, I don't think, um. Are, are, are a problem, in my personal opinion, a hundred and twenty-five feet is, is big enough for these luxury houses up there.
So that's right, they're all gonna be sprinkled too?
That's right.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Other questions?
So for the lot twelve and lot eleven, some, half of the lot is, uh, half of the lot will be used for the detention pond, right?
That's right.
So it's sh- right now, you're showing it's one point one acre, but it's, uh, there's a easement, right? And you have a fence right there, right? So.
Yes, so we have a detention pond, um, with a fence to indicate where the easement is, that's right. Um, and if you look at some of the complying lots, the backyard, um, is, is about the same. It's maybe a little bit shorter. Uh, lot eleven definitely has, um, area that's similar to some of these other lots. Lot twelve is probably the smallest, um, but it's, it's not too far off from thirteen and fourteen, which are, you know, have no easement on them either. And this is a little, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, uh, I was wondering, is there a gate to enter that, uh, area?
Yeah, so this plan, keep in mind, is not a, a design plan, it's a preliminary plan. So. Once, if, uh, we go over to ZBA and we are granted a, a waiver of frontage. We would update the full plan set, um, that you're familiar looking at, which would indicate the gates and. And all the, the widths of the access roads, et cetera, to modify the subdivision. So, um, there, but to simply answer your question, yes, there will be a gate.
Other questions? Other questions?
Madam Chair, it's Larry.
Go ahead, Larry.
Um, so could, uh, maybe Rob could help me on this or Pam, do, there's, there must be other newer subdivisions that have some of these frontage matters that have been waived by the zoning board for, do we have any examples that could bring to mind, not only for me, members and?
Directly to the south. Um, and the extension of Cypress, um, and you can see him moving his, um, cursor. Um, those were all addressed by the zoning board of appeals, um, and that site is under construction right now.
Okay. Yeah, so it, it has, it has been done. Uh, I was joking on the last meeting where, you know, the attorney said it was the gold standard twenty, in my opinion, is too much. This is a more suiting plan, in my opinion, to come, uh, before us and back in the ZBA.
Thank you.
Other questions before we open it up to the public? Okay, Rob?
Uh, ladies and gentlemen, if you'd like to, um, address, uh, the board, if you could use the raise your hand function, um, at the bottom of your screen, if you hover over it, um, a little menu will pop up and you'll see a raise your hand um, icon and you just press that and you're ready to go. And I do not see anyone, um, raising their hand at this point in time. Uh, I do want to remind the board that this is a preliminary plan, uh, it's not final. If they are granted zoning relief, they will come back to us, uh, with a full set of plans, um. And as far as they do not make any major modifications and, you know, come back with something uh, with a whole bunch of tadpole tails, um, we should be able to, uh, accept it without, uh, too much issue.
Okay.
Uh, madam chair, may I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, there are three hydrants I can see on the plan, or is there more?
Um, I don't think I labeled them on the plan, but I have at least one at the end of each cul-de-sac and one, um, at the access road to the drainage, uh, basin. And then there is one at the end of Westbury Road.
Okay, I missed the one at the, uh, road to the drainage basement, uh, drainage easement then. Um, my, my thought process is, um, from the road that comes in from Chilton, uh, where you go out towards Rockland Circle, that's what, about nine hundred feet?
I'm sorry, so I, I'm sharing the screen again, so you're saying Westbury Road here?
Yes, from, from Westbury to the end of the cul-de-sac, uh, up towards Rockland to the west. What's that distance?
Um, I don't have it on the plan, but it's probably about nine hundred feet, sure. We got hydrant here at the end, one here, and then I think I was playing one here.
Right, so we carry eight hundred feet of hose, i- i- we might just want to put one in the middle of that stretch of roadway there.
Okay.
And then the other, the only other comment is the hydrant that's in the cul-de-sac at the top. If we could just put that off to a forty-five degree angle, because the plows tend to just push all the snow straight forward, um, when plowing the streets at first, and then we, uh, bury our hydrants and we never see them again till spring.
Sure, we can put it off to the side. I, I like to keep them somewhere near property lines, so we'll either put it, you know, on, on one of the sides over here. I think this one might be okay, but we can work with you on the, the locations when we finalize the design plans, without a doubt.
Very good, thank you.
I just had a question, uh, really quickly, I'm so sorry. Uh, okay, so there were fifteen fully conforming lots before, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, and now there are, uh, eighteen lots that you're proposing, but six of them um, conform in terms of frontage in size, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, all right. Um, and the reason for that is, um, uh, did you say that it wasn't a good use of the lots?
So I can share the screen here. So, you know, when you, when you come around the corners here, there's the geometry and the nature of this gives us enough frontage for these lots here. The geometry of the, the width of this road, uh, this lot, the existing lot, doesn't give us enough depth to give a hundred twenty-five foot width, so the lot ends up being a little bit wider. So we have adequate area and adequate frontage. And then up here in the, at the cul-de-sac, uh, again, instead of pushing the road out further, we're trying to keep the road a little shorter, and so that gives some extra area for this lot. Um, so we ended up with a hundred seventy-five feet of frontage at the setback, and again, these two lots ended up being a little bit oversized. Um, these other lots are almost perfectly, this width of this area here almost perfectly fits for a thirty thousand square foot lot at a hundred and twenty-five foot width. So that's why you see these, um, the majority of these are where we're looking for the, the frontage waiver, and at this cul-de-sac here.
Thank you.
So Chief Williams, you might be able to answer this, or Rob, but this, the previous, um, plan is where we had the letters on file for, from the police department and the fire department with no concerns for public safety.
That is correct, ma'am.
And would those be voided since there'll be additional lives on this road, or does that not matter?
I don't think it matters from, uh, my end, and I don't think it'd matter from the police department end. Uh, that was more concerning the length of the road, not the number of people on the houses that were there.
Okay. All right, thank you. Uh, Robbie can open it to the public?
Um, oh, we had already, um.
No one there?
And I had nobody raising their hand.
Okay.
So, um, we can proceed with your.
I would, someone like to make a motion?
Motion to grant to ZBA.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Ari Hassan?
Yes.
Samantha Bryce?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Rida Das?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
For its consideration.
Have a good night.
Good evening.
All right, so we're back. To four thirty-two Crescent Street. Scott, you ran away from us.
Darn.
Yeah, I did.
Okay.
They were just waiting for me at Giorgio's, they're getting cold now.
Oh, wait, there's more.
I'm fast.
All right, is there a plan for four thirty-two Crescent Street?
Yeah, sorry about that, madam chair, thank you for, uh, for not kicking me out entirely. So what we have is a, a preliminary subdivision, a piece of property, uh, on the corner of Crescent and Henry Street. Uh, kind of a, a oddly shaped parcel of land. Uh, it's on Crescent Street. Uh, a little bit of a mixed zone, mostly multifamily homes. Across the street on Crescent Street, there's a, a couple of, uh, of commercial units, but it, it's essentially a, a multifamily neighborhood. Uh, so what we're hoping to do is to get preliminary approval tonight, so we can go to the ZBA and then come back, uh, to you folks for a definitive plan, but what we're looking to do is to divide the property into, uh, into three lots. Lot A, uh, on Crescent Street would be a seventy-two hundred square foot duplex home, uh. The houses immediately around it are two family, uh, units to the, to the left, to the rear and also across the street. Those are two family homes, uh, so we're hoping that the board and the ZBA would, uh, would find that that lot A, uh, kind of is in, uh, is in fitting with the neighborhood. Uh, lot B has the existing home on it. It's a three-bedroom, uh, excuse me, an existing three-family dwelling. Uh, that'll have about eleven thousand square feet on it. Uh, the access is currently and will remain off of Henry Street. Then the third lot would be lot C, about an eighty-seven hundred square foot lot, uh, that has frontage on Henry and Molten Street. Uh, that one is kind of tucked in that corner where there, on Henry Street and Molten Street, there are mostly one-family homes, so we, uh, proposed a one-family home on that one. Uh, it would most likely be a four-bedroom home, uh, you know, uh, enough of a driveway for two cars on it, and we felt like also lot C would, uh, would fit in with the neighborhood, so. So that's our plan. So we're just looking for preliminary approval for you folks, uh, that would allow us to get to the ZBA and, uh, and see if they agree with us on this lot division plan.
All right, so I'll open it up to, um, questions. Scott, talk to us about parking, starting with lot B. How many do you have?
Yeah, so lot B, as I said, it's a, it's an existing three-family, uh, it's got an existing driveway, uh, that'll remain. It's, uh, enough for four cars. There's a little short driveway just off of that, uh, that used to be used, uh, to get into that existing garage, but right now, we're going to be tearing that garage down, so we would have about, uh, about five, uh, parking spaces for that existing three-family home, madam chair.
And you need, how many?
Zoning, we need two per, uh, two per unit.
So you'll have five, but you need six?
Exactly.
Madam Chair, it's Larry. Question, Scott? So you're going to remove that garage, because I was looking at that, it's so close to the lot line on C.
Exactly.
Is there not enough room to get another parking spot in there?
Oh, looking at it now, uh, we should probably put two parking spaces right there where that garage is. So we'd have four in the, the big driveway, we can eliminate that little stub and, uh, and put two spaces right there where the current garage is, that would.
I mean, it looks like these rooms, it's kind of on an elevated area back there, um, where it's located, but it looks like to me you could get six spots out of that if you, if you're going to remove that garage, but the other concern is on lot A, um, being so close to Crescent Street.
Um, yeah, and I can explain that one, Mr. Hassan, the, the, there's a section in the zoning bylaw, uh, twenty-seven thirteen, but I'm sure that's not the, the right section, but there's a section in the bylaw that allows you to, instead of holding the thirty-foot front yard setback, it allows you to hold the average of your two abutting houses, your house to the left and your house to the right. Uh, and the main reason for that is in a situation like this, you don't want to have a brand-new house sitting back thirty-five feet from the street. If your neighbors are ten feet from the street, it'll look like the, it'll look like the house was just dropped, uh, in place there and doesn't really fit in. So in this case, our, uh, our, the house on lot B is eight and a half feet. The house on our abutting property is eight feet on, uh, number four twelve Crescent Street. So, uh, we chose to hold a, a ten-foot setback on that one. Uh, again, wh- where we're going for variance, whether or not that section of zoning, whether the building inspector would agree that that section of zoning still, uh, still works for us where we're dividing the property, but either way, we would be looking for, uh, for relief from the ZBA just to cover ourselves on that end. But that's the, uh, that was the thinking behind it. And to be honest with you, that, that section of the lot is only, it's less than seventy feet wide, so uh, we wouldn't be able to hold the thirty-foot front in a thirty-foot rear, uh, and be able to fit a house, so that's, uh, that was the main reason for putting it at, at that location, sir.
Okay, I was just wondering if, I mean, even to move it back ten feet, it wouldn't, it wouldn't make sense, or is that, is that so? Because zoning is probably going to ask about that.
It's, uh, yeah, you know, I, I, I guess it comes up to a preference. We could certainly, if we moved it to twenty, then we would have twenty, twenty in the front and twenty in the rear, uh. One way to look at it, if you're going to allow this plan as it is, what's one more variance to the rear yard of, uh, of lot A, to be honest with you. So we could certainly look at, uh, doing that, make that adjustment, uh, to the ZBA plan, uh, as you suggested, and have the twenty-foot front and the twenty-foot rear, and we can just add that uh, variance request to our, to our petition.
No, I mean, it's just, just a thought, just something, the way I'm looking at it, it's just so close to Crescent Street, um. I mean, lot C, even, I mean, it's a single-family home, so just looking at, well, I can see that, okay. I don't really have any other particular questions, I just think that, again, if you're removing that garage, I think you should be able to get two more spots in there, and if you move in the duplex, the proposed duplex back, it might be easier, but that's just my thought, my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, madam chair, if I could, yeah, it, it does seem tight for parking, considering these are multifamilies, not single.
Sure.
Um, single family, not as much as a concern as opposed to lot A and lot B, those suggestions are are good, but it's going to seem, it's, 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 I don't know, I guess my point is, it just seems tight.
Right, lot, lot A is, is what? It doesn't, I can't tell. What are you proposing for lot A, Scott?
That would be a duplex, a, your typical side-by-side duplex with a, you know, a drive to the left for the left-hand unit and a drive to the right for the right-hand unit, uh.
How many bedrooms, how many bedrooms are proposed in each duplex, in each side?
It would be a typical three-bedroom duplex, yeah.
In the multi? Uh, I'm sorry, in the three-family?
To be honest with you, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I could probably pull the field card and get your answer, but I, I, I don't know off the top of my head, Mrs. Wayne.
No, that's all right, but typically, you know, uh, I, I, I guess this one comes down to parking where we like to consider maybe a spot and a half per bedroom, uh.
Oops. He's gone.
Yeah, I think he froze.
Oh, he's back.
Okay.
Scott, you with us?
No, I thought Jim was speaking.
Jim was speaking, Jim was gone.
Oh.
The only one with technology is madam chair.
So, uh, madam chair, it's Larry.
He was saying, you know, one point five parking per bedroom, um, which I have to agree with him, it is, uh, a lot to throw in these small, this, it's small property.
It's always the, uh, it's always the problem we come up with the ZBA, you, you know, the zoning requires two per unit. Obviously, if you've got four bedrooms, there's a likelihood that you're going to have more than two cars for that one unit, so it's, it's always a, uh, a tricky situation, and of course, you know, we don't want to necessarily have giant parking lots in residential areas, so it's, it's, uh, it's tough to find the balance between what the zoning requires and what you really need, uh, in the real world, I guess.
Right, and I understand, but, uh, this is, does seem to be a, like, we're trying to cram a lot into a small area and then backing, you know, trying to pull out of these houses where the, there's not much frontage onto a very busy Crescent Street.
Exactly, I think the, the Henry Street and the Molten Street are, you know, are typical residential streets, not as much of an issue, but I understand backing onto Crescent Street isn't, uh, I'm sure is a little bit of a scary situation most of the time.
If, if you downsize this project, would it give more space and room to consider safety and parking and, and compliance?
Well, we, you know, we, we did talk about that, madam chair, we said, you know, if, if the ZBA denied it, how well, we, we really have no other way to divide the property just because of the location of the existing home. You know, so it, forgetting the size and all those issues, it makes sense that you would get one lot to the right of the building on, on Henry Street and one lot to the left of the house on Crescent Street, so, uh, you know, i- if you eliminated the house on lot A, I guess the only thing you could do, you could add another parking area for the existing three-family home uh, off of Crescent Street, just to give them more parking than they currently have, uh, you know, that's one thing you could do, and then still have lot C as a standalone, single-family home that that kind of fits in with the neighborhood and you don't have as many issues coming in off of Molten Street. Uh, or, you know, on the other hand, you could keep lot A and turn lot C into additional parking, so I, I guess there's, uh, there's two different ways to cut it, but we, we just felt like with the shape of the property in, in the size of the neighboring lots, that it made sense, at least from a, from a, a geometric point of view for the lots to divide it this way. I, I, I certainly understand, uh, your concerns, and as I said, it, it comes up every month at the ZBA about packing on these, uh, these lots that we're trying to get multifamily homes into, it's, uh, it's definitely an issue.
Um, madam chair?
Yes.
Uh, if I may, um, I think in, in, um, our review internally, um, lot A is, is a very difficult sell. Um, you know, given that it's a two-family on the smallest lot, um, with very tight parking and backing out onto Crescent Street, and I think it's a reach too far. Um, it, if lot A and lot B were combined, um, I could see a two-lot subdivision. I could see a two-lot subdivision with lot C being developed in lot A and B. You know, as, as one lot with, with the, the three-family house. Uh, there with, you know, with, with parking improved.
Yeah, we could, if that was a situation, you could come up with a parking lot where you could, uh. You know, in a small parking lot, but you could drive out of. The new park, you would put there as opposed to backing out, so we were at least resolved that issue.
That you'd come in. And come out.
Yep, back out in your parking lot and drive out onto Crescent Street. So you'd be driving in and driving out and, uh. That would, I think, help the, the situation on lot B, and then, uh. You know, we don't have to build the, the parking lot as Mr. Hassan, the driveway that Mr. Hassan was speaking about. Uh, where the existing garages, we could just tear it down, green that up and, uh. And, and put the additional.
Whole area could become green.
Yeah.
Because I believe the house faces this way, does it not?
Does, it does.
So you're really parking in their front yard.
Exactly.
So where does that leave us if you were to consider that?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Your choice with this is you let it move on to the definitive, the way it stands? You deny it? Or you recommend changes? So you can move it to the definitive stage with particular. Recommendations of, of particular conditions.
Ask for a continuance?
Yes, you may.
It's out with my client, as opposed to, obviously, we don't want to get a denial, and I'd rather not go to the ZBA. With all of these questions and you folks never seeing the plan that I'm going to bring to the ZBA. At least if I get a continuance, I can. Tune this plan up tomorrow, get it in time for your filing deadline of Monday to get on to the March meeting and we'll, uh. Take into account all the suggestions that have been made and, and have a. A plan that everybody hopefully is happy or with in March, and then we can proceed to the ZBA after that.
Continuing from the ZBA?
I think we'll have to at this point, sure. I, I mean, there's no doubt we have to, we can't get to the ZBA without your approval, so that, that will, uh. We'll have to definitely table that for this month.
I think that's a good plan, Scott.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so do we have to? Take a roll call vote on continuing this, Pam?
Continue to the next meeting?
So. Um, do we need a motion first or just a roll call?
Please.
A motion?
Motion to continue to the next meeting, four thirty-two Crescent Street.
Second.
Okay, roll call, Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Samantha Boyce?
Yes.
Rita Das?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
Tony Gonzalez, yes. Thank you, Scott.
Thanks for the input, folks.
Who seconded that? I didn't.
Me.
All right, any other business? If not, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
New adjourn.
Larry Hassan?
Yes.
Samantha Boyce?
Yes.
Rita Das?
Yes.
James Sweeney?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
I know.
All right, good night, all.
Everyone, have a good night.